...for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just have one, one quick announcement here I'd like to make tonight, and that's to let people know that the American Duchess, which is the newest steamboat, the American Queen flag, is going to be in Winona on Tuesday, September 5th, all day, and it's nice to have them here on a weekday when our, all our stores and businesses are open, and looking forward to that, and hope people will come down to the levee to welcome this brand-new boat to Winona. So, they'll be here, I believe, from eight in the morning till at least five, maybe seven o'clock at night. So, that's it. City manager?
Your honor, just want to thank staff for all the help putting the preliminary 2018 budget together, and remind council that we are meeting early next week, Monday and Tuesday, to go through that process.
Okay. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurling.
Here.
Craig Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Porchakowski.
Here.
Joel Meyer.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is a request to hold the Warrior Waddle on Saturday, October 21st. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Al?
Just recognition of the request from the folks asking for this, to mark the course with chalk. Just want to make that request to make sure it's part of this motion.
Okay. Accept that?
I accept that.
All right.
Fine.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 3.2 is a request to close a portion of Ewing Street by EB's Bar on Saturday, October 7th. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 3.3 are the banner and sign requests for the Project Fine Welcoming Week in St. Mary's Church River City Festival. Move to approve those requests?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 3.4 is the Harriet Street Car Club Event on Saturday, September 30th. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? George?
I see Claudia is here. If she wants to tell us about the event, or?
Yes, I actually have two of my moments for it. But I'm from Lake, for Lake Side Street which used to be MSMA, and we haven't been together in a long time. I'm just trying to get the whole car club together, and so we just want to have a street night, and invite all the neighbors too. So, really appreciate it to have it, because we haven't done it in a long time, so it'd be a lot of fun.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Al?
I just wanted to thank Claudia for the wonderful holiday displays as well.
Yes.
Going forward, it's really been fun for the grandchildren to go by there and either press the button or see the Halloween display, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. We have to get this year.
Okay.
We don't know what yet. We have to come up with an idea then.
Yes. Well, this is an easy thing to prove, for me.
All right.
You're welcome.
Well, then, let's approve it.
We love to do it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Approve.
Item 3.5 is the Harriet Street Block Party on Wednesday, September 6th. This is Harriet between 9th and 10th. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Approve.
Item 3.6 is a block party request for East 10th Street on Saturday, September 9th. Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
That's a nice event.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 3.7 is a request for camping in the parks. This would be at Sinclair Park on the evening of Saturday, August 26th. Move to approve that request?
Second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Al?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Our agenda item talks about campers must be 18 years old or older, and then minors must be supervised by a parent or legal guardian. I guess it's kind of a contradiction, you know? If, if campers must be 18 years or older, um, minors, I mean, where do minors come in in all of this? And, and I'm, I'm asking as well about the question of overnight and early morning supervision, and the limit to the number of campers for Sinclair Park, I guess.
Mayor and council do answer your first question about the age limit. So, what it is, campers have to be basically an adult to be there on their own. So, minor children may accompany adults.
Okay.
But they have to be 18 and up to be there on their own.
Okay.
And then as far as the, you asked about the number of people. We don't have a cap on that. We discussed a couple of different routes as far as requesting pre-registration or trying to, trying to obtain X number of people. What we really want to do is attract as many people as possible. Of course, all the parks and recreation events, they are about fun and creative programming, but really they're about connecting people and connecting neighborhoods. So, we didn't want to put a limit to how many people that we try to connect.
How many people do you think might?
We are guessing around 40 to 60 people. So, on the, on the, on the Facebook page, there's about 90 people interested in it.
Oh, wow.
So, that's a word.
Have you ever done this before?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Overnight camping in the parks has been approved by council in the past, but not in the same fashion.
Not in this.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
And you had a third question on there.
Well, it was about the overnight. You have a supervision from park staff up to 11 o'clock, and then from 10 a.m. the next day. So, I mean, there's a gap between 11 at night and 10 in the morning.
Yep, that's when everybody's going to be sleeping.
(laughing)
Safe and sound. So, we do have staff there to run programmed events that, that are the smores and the fire pit, but the, the events they're going to do will aid in that theme of connecting people. So, some of the activities will, will get different families, different groups together. And then when that's over at 11, the staff will pack up, take the fire pit down, and then we're asking for additional patrols from police to, to be in the area. And then the next day, on that Sunday, the staff are there to do, to do two things. Help, help people pick up, help make sure that the campers pick up as well, and then also help people head on out.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes.
Is this a non-alcoholic event?
That's correct. No alcohol allowed.
George?
And there are restrooms there, right? I know there's one.
Correct. Yep, there's one right now.
I think a few years back, there was a event, there was a sleepover one night to draw attention to what homeless people go through. Was it four years ago, five years ago?
That was in Lake Park?
That was Lake Park, yes.
Yeah.
But there was one at Sinclair, too.
They might have done multiple, but WSU had those over, had a few of those over the course of that year, I think.
Do you think one porta body's sufficient, or?
We're going to monitor the numbers that we're seeing on the Internet and staff as far as people that they're talking to, and we can always add another one at the last minute on Thursday.
Pam, I think you had a question.
Oh, that, that's my neighborhood. So, I wanted to know if I could come over and have smores and then go home and sleep in my own bed.
That's, that's perfect camping. I think they call that glamping, actually.
Glamping. Thank you, Patrick.
Like that.
Pam, glamp.
Any, are there any other questions?
Pam could probably bring a six-pack, too.
No.
No.
Cap C for eight.
Yeah.
Cap C for eight.
There aren't any other questions, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 3.8 is the Zumbro Street Closure for the Winona Area Catholic Schools Event on Friday, September 1st.
Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 3.9 is the USDA's study of mallard health at Lake Winona. I would, let's see. Is this just a communication?
It is.
You don't need us to approve anything? If you have questions, John, tell us.
Correct. We just felt that because of the nature of water foul at the lake, we wanted to make the council and the community aware that this was happening.
Is that an emphasis on the fall?
Yes.
Some people? Can they include the geese with this, too?
They could just take.
Not this one. Not this one.
John, for our vast audience, maybe you could just explain this a little bit?
Honorable mayor and council, so the USDA is interested in doing a study of the mallards, partly because we have a lot of, a lot of ducks at the lake. But this is, is something that they, they're doing across the state, I believe, in trying to understand what diseases are, are being encountered by mallard ducks. And so, they, they wanted to let us know they were planning on this, and, you know, we could say no, but it seems to me pretty, pretty non-invasive.
Al? So, would the city then be receiving the results of this survey?
I've, I've requested that we get the results, as well as also a population count, and so we all, we'll benefit with additional information.
Awesome. Okay.
Thank you very much. Next?
Yeah, moving on to item 3.10 is an appointment to the Fine Arts Commission of Matthew Flurdy.
Move to confirm that appointment?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Yeah. Just, just a comment. I see he had, had his undergraduate degree from Beloit College, which is my alma mater, so.
Well, he's got to be a good.
I definitely will approve this.
Well, I know Matt. I know he'll be an excellent addition to the Fine Arts Commission.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. All right, thank you.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is to ward the wastewater treatment plant emergency gas scrubber project to Wafishaw Construction. I had approved the attached resolution.
I'll second it.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Al. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Under new business, item 5.1 is to set the date for the public hearing to consider resolution of loving assessments for unpaid charges. The hearing would be set for September 18th, and an updated draft assessment roll was handed out this evening. So, move?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Any discussion?
Will this be held at the same time as council meeting, or on a stubborn date?
Council meeting.
Okay.
Oh, Michelle?
Mary, just for the people, they have until that meeting to still come in and pay their assessments, and then at the meeting, if they come in, they have a week? How does that work?
For the dates, um, let's see, if they come, if they appear, if they, they have until September 19th to pay with no additional charges.
Okay.
And then if, if any, anyone appears at the September 18th meeting, then they have one more, um, they have one, they have until September 25th then to pay without any additional charges. And they've all, they'll all get notices. Tomorrow, Monica will send out all of the notices tomorrow for them, with giving them all the dates and all of the information if they don't already have it. They've also gotten their, their statements, their monthly statements as well.
Al has a question.
Yeah. Is there anything the city can do to, when those statements go out, to say, pay it, or you're going to be part of this whole process, so that the city can recover those fees or, or amounts due before it becomes part of? I mean, this has got to be fairly intense as far as staff time and, and mailing and postage costs, so that if we can in some way encourage people to pay before all of this process, we'll be, you know, a few dollars ahead.
Um, well, we try. We send out the, the notices that the bill is not paid. We send it to landlords, as well as the tenants. Um, so, and quite a few of these people know, know the process.
Yeah, I get the sense.
They're very well aware. Some of these people are only on every, I mean, they're on every year.
Exactly.
So, they're, they're, they're used to getting letters, they're used to having it put on their property taxes, so. But as I say, that, to recover that time, we do add on additional charges for the ministry fees, so.
I understand, but one would think that, you know, people might be encouraged in some form or fashion to pay those without having the city go through this whole process of doing these whole things.
And if any of them call, and if any of them call, we do tell them that if they pay by this certain date, you know, then they'll be off the list, and it won't go any further, and all of that. So, we try to encourage it as much as we, as much as we possibly can. But as I say, quite a few of these people are aware of the process.
Yeah, most of us who get bills generally pay them, and we have a few people who perhaps are not, um, helping the city in, in this regard.
Well, they, I mean, they'll, they'll, they'll get paid. I mean, they all, they all get paid unless there's a foreclosure.
Exactly.
So, there's very little that doesn't get paid with, with all the additional charges.
Yeah.
So, the city is not out money in the long run.
I'm turning, I'm thinking about the short run.
Mary, could you tell us what that number is for the unpaid charges?
The, um, let's see, the utility bills, the exact number here. The unpaid water and sanitary sewer, and the storm sewer, that would be 200, 238,788 dollars. And then there's additional, putting in meters, that's additional 560 dollars. Ice and snow removal, that has not been paid. Those bills that were, where we took care of the ice and snow for properties last winter, that's 2,636 dollars. And then there's also folks with rubbish, garbage removal, and mowing, and that's above 5,800 dollars.
Yeah, I do have another question, Mary. Sorry about that. On the assessments for unpaid charges, in that frozen water meter section, what's under description the Verizon package?
Uh, Keith can answer that here.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor and council, the, the property owners have the ability to request or to purchase a system that will actually connect up to the meter and sends out a cell signal through, through that company, and they can monitor the water usage of a facility at home on the computer. This would be one that didn't pay that bill.
Okay. Wasn't aware of that.
Oh, yes. It's very slick, too. The, within 10 minutes, you can find out how your, if you flush the toilet, how the water usage is. I went, if you go down to the water department, they'll show you how it works. Everybody can hook up onto it anywhere in the world. You can turn on your phone and see if you have a leak. I'm telling you, it's pretty slick.
And the toilet's used.
Right, and if you, if you play with it, and you turn on the faucet, you can actually identify each faucet on there.
And what's the cost for that service?
I, I don't recall.
It's not very much, actually. It's, uh, there's a hookup fee, and then, um, I can't, I can't remember what the deal with Verizon is. You don't have to be a Verizon customer to use it. But if you call the water department, they can give you the information. It's available to everyone in the city of Winona.
Most of landlords are using it.
Yes, because the tenants have leaks and don't tell them.
They don't tell you.
And $4,000 later, they want to be here telling you that they didn't use the water.
Oh, wow. I was just not aware. I saw that. I went, what is, you know, Horizon involved with as far as that goes?
Are there other questions, concerns? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 5.2 is the environmental review requirements for the Winona HRA, and Linda Bedka is here if you have questions.
I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the appropriate certifications and checklists.
I would second that motion.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Discussion?
Does Linda have anything to add, or?
Do you want to add?
Now, I appreciate you considering my priority of doing that. When we are ready, I would add that on the interview table, we have something to do. Was it a question concerning Adam's life? Shall we have him think of an appropriate analogy?
Okay. Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 5.3 is the Minnesota Housing Partnership Technical Assistance Memorandum of Understanding.
I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the attached memorandum.
I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 5.4 is a call for public hearing at 102 Walnut for proposed business assistance. The hearing would be on October 2nd.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution calling for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Discussion? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 5.5 is a call for public hearing on the property at 956 Mankato Avenue for proposed business assistance. The hearing would be held on October 2nd.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
George, move. Michelle, second it.
Mess him up, George. Mess him up.
Yeah, I was just.
Good, George.
Good for you, George. You got in there. All right, any discussion?
I have, I have a question.
Okay, Pam?
Can anyone tell me what are the significant soil issues that prohibit the planned development?
Lucy knows all about it, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the.
Oh, I just mean, what are the soil issues? The underlying reason for this is that there are, there's obviously pollution, polluted soil there.
Yes, mayor and council, it's more geotechnical related, so the soil is what they call a gray clay or muck material, and that has to be excavated out in order to build a multi-story building. Sand placed in the site, and then it has to be surcharged, or it could be built on what's called geo pilings. So, all of that soil excavation work and remediation requires additional funds, of course.
So, we're not talking about some leak of chemicals or petroleum or anything that's gotten in there?
No, it is not contaminated soil. It's geotechnical related.
Okay. Thank you, Lucy.
Any other questions? Not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 5.6 is the State Agreement for Airport Maintenance Reimbursement.
Move to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Guess not. We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 5.7 is the Final Plan for the Witt Subdivision.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 5.8 is the Minnesota Highway Freight Program Grant Application for Riverview Drive.
So, move?
Second.
Motion by George, and seconded by Paul.
What, what are you recommending for the plan? Which?
We're on 5.8. Oh. I thought we used to.
5.8.
5.8 for the road.
She's one on one. I'm like, I don't get it.
I have a question.
We get there. Paul?
Um, will we be able, will we have input? I mean, I know that this is, part of the stretch is hopefully, well, is part of the stretch which I envision as the connecting link from, from the levee to the Marine Art Museum, and/or potentially to Prairie Island for non-motorized vehicular traffic. Will we be able to participate in, in somehow coming up with our own plans to incorporate that?
Mayor and council, the, the city would be, we'd hire a consultant to do the design for us, but the city would control how the, what the design consists of. We would look at, at, as a trail like that as a possibility, and consider that when we get into it. We're not sure yet if this funding would pay for that portion of it or not, but we'll have that discussion when we get, get to that point, if we could get awarded the grant.
Keith, I have a question. Al, I think we all know the railroad track crossing there is horrendous. That whole curve there, the safety issues that are obvious in that stretch, will that be a part of this work as well?
This would extend all the way to second, so.
All the way to second, but, so, any of the safety issues for that curve would also be a part of this?
There, that, a lot of those will be addressed by the bridge project when that's finished.
Okay, all right.
But as far as getting rid of the bumps and, and that, this could be addressed in, in part of this project.
Okay. Thank you. George?
Maybe what you're referring to is, could that curve at all be redesigned?
We certainly could look at that, see if there's, you know, if there's restrictions in the right way, or what.
Sure, sure.
Widen it out or something, but at this point, we just don't know.
Yeah.
It's, it's the main route from Wisconsin to our port, so we certainly have to keep that open.
But Keith, it's fair to say that if that, if that curve could be changed so that it's safer, they would certainly do that.
Yep, absolutely.
They, they wouldn't leave a existing condition if it wasn't the safest option for the community.
I hope that's the case.
It does make it more complicated than moving this, the railroad crossing and all that, but it's part of the discussion.
Okay. Any other questions? Not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie?
Item 5.9 is the Solarstone Community Solar Garden Subscription.
And this is a topic that the council spent an hour on prior to tonight's meeting, so we're pretty well-versed in this. But, John, you want to summarize it for everybody?
Honorable mayor and council, so a community solar garden is a case where you subscribe to a solar array that's off-site, and in return, you get a bill credit from Excel Energy. And as long as what you're paying to the community solar garden is less than what you're getting back from Excel, you're, you're saving money in the process. So, it's a way to support solar, and also has financial benefits. Solarstone is here tonight with Gordy. Gordy, who was here actually two months ago, gave a brief summary presentation. He's here again tonight to answer any further questions and get in more details. But the, what they're able to offer us is 40% of our energy will be covered by a solar subscription. And my, I have staff has reviewed this as, as our attorney, and there are still some items to work out in the contract specifically. But staff recommendation, my recommendation is to proceed with this subscription, because it does have financial and environmental benefits. And there are three different models we could subscribe to. Rates all would save us money in the long term, but probably the most favorable in terms of total savings would be a fixed rate of 13 cents. But it really is, that is another piece of consideration. If you, if we choose to proceed with the solar garden, we would then have to determine what rate structure we would like to do. There are some considerations that the council needs to keep in mind. One is that it is a 25-year term contract, so it is a long-term contract, and cancellation is difficult, is costly. But again, I think I mentioned in my staff report that really unless electricity prices really drop, there's no, there would be no incentive or reason to withdraw from this, from this contract. So, it is, it would be a way to get more solar energy, or for us to subscribe and support the solar industry, and also save money. That's, that's the, that's, to me, is the kind of important pieces and figures. But I'm here to have, be happy to answer your questions, as is, as is Gordy, to better explain this.
And again, what you're asking for is the council to authorize finalization of the contract and bring it back for a final vote.
Correct.
I, I would move to go with the fixed rate model.
I'd second that.
Okay. Motion by Paul, and seconded by Pam. Any other discussion? Al?
Yeah, I, you know, as, as I said in the pre-council meeting, I, I do have some issues moving forward with this agreement. Among them are the length of the agreement, of the 25-year timeframe, to me, is not something I'm comfortable with. I don't think the city should be. You know, it's kind of like, you know, if, if a few years ago, we could lock in a, a per-gallon cost for gasoline at $4 a gallon because prices were going way up. And if we had done that, we would have been not well-served. So, I, I think the, the energy field is, is more fluid than I think this contract would lead the city into. And, and I'm not willing to support the 25-year timeframe. I, I would be willing to look at something shorter, you know, as far as timeframe goes, and I just can't see moving forward with this, and, and, you know, as far as the upfront costs for the city, for the potential savings, and for whatever future, um, adjustments are made in terms of generating energy through solar or other means. So, I'm going to vote against this motion.
Okay. Other discussion? Michelle?
I have a question. We didn't get to this in our pre-council, but it talks about us setting up a revolving fund for the, any saved money, pooled money. What is that exactly?
As you look through the pro forma, you see that there are savings. It would allow us to pool those funds and use them for various ideas. One suggestion would be is to put that back into the system, so to speak, for renewables. Another, I believe it could be used for offsetting costs, city costs, taxes. So, there's a couple of different, because it's a different revenue stream, it presents the council the option to do some various things with that money.
So, is this revolving fund then not static, as in it is not designated specifically for something? It's something that can be used for anything?
We would want the council to dedicate where those funds would be used for.
But this resolution isn't doing that yet? Because we didn't talk about it or...
John?
So, the, in the resolution is what, sort of my suggestion is to use this, use the savings towards future energy savings and theoretically kind of compound those, those benefits. So, that's sort of a writer to the resolution. You can easily, easily can come back to this anytime in the future. That decision doesn't have to be made now. But my recommendation is to use it as revolving fund to help support partners in energy and some of the other environmental activities.
I understand that, but my concern is with the wording here is that it's not specific. Or what if some of us wanted to redo up some of the failing infrastructure like piping, you know, some of our underground sewer water? I would want to see specific wording that would say how that money is usable. Or what if one of the buildings needed something electric inside? Does that fit into this? Or, so to me, that kind of, that right there kills this for me a little bit because I'd want to know specifically, are we creating a new fund next to like our building fund and our equipment fund and our general fund? Or are you just saying that these monies will be accounted for and then available for use in other ways without specifying what those other ways are?
We can be as specific or as vague as council wants.
Right. But I, that's what I'm saying with this one. What are we saying?
That, that's just a suggestion.
Okay.
I mean, we could probably justify paying John's salary out of the savings as well.
That would be fine, but I'm just saying, I would rather either remove this and come back to this discussion.
Oh, sure.
Because I would like to actually sit, have that discussion. Because right now, I wouldn't know what wording would be appropriate to slide in there that we all could agree on. For instance, you might have ideas of what these renewable projects could be, but without knowing what that is, or for the next twenty-five years, are we really dedicating the money for this, but it can only be used for this one specific purpose? Or is it available for multiple things in the city? For instance, your salary, as Mark would say. I'm just saying, I need to know more specifically. Like, if you ask what the equipment fund is, it's very specific how it's used. So, for me, I would just, because as George would say, one of his favorite projects is the million-dollar road project. Well, what if there was some savings for the community that way? I mean, is there a way to use the money in other places that might benefit the community as a whole? So, for me, that kills it, this resolution.
Is it actually, is that in the resolution?
Yes.
Where is it in?
It's at the bottom of the resolution. Says be further resolved that we will create a revolving fund. And without knowing specifically what that is, I'm uncomfortable approving that because I would like us to have that. I, we just didn't have time tonight with all the questions to discuss with that.
It's very generic, though.
Would you like to make an amendment?
Just pull it out.
I would, I would like to amend to remove that from the resolution and come back, circle back to that discussion at a later date.
I would second that.
Good point. Okay. So, we have a motion to amend and a second by Pam. Any discussion about the amendment? Everybody understand we're pulling that language out? Okay. We'll vote on it. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay. Are we ready to vote on the first motion?
Just a comment, Mayor, that, you know, please don't understand if I don't support the resolution as amended. It's not because I oppose energy saving and conservation. It's because the terms of this specific agreement are something I'm not comfortable with.
Okay. George?
So, then you will come back. We're giving you the go-ahead here to begin negotiations, if I understand that correctly?
We'll bring a contract back.
We'll bring a contract.
And have a conversation about this result, this revolving loan.
Okay. And more of a dollar figure as well, too.
Yes. And the pro formas that are included in this, in the council package, that's pretty, pretty much what we'll expect to see with, as was discussed earlier, there is a possibility of moving more of our energy to small, small meters that will have a greater payback. So, those numbers should be, should be at least what they are on the pro formas, if not a little bit better in terms of financial return. And one item I did want to mention, I forgot to mention earlier, in my staff report, I did say that the Winona Public School District was going with a thirteen percent rate. It actually was the twelve-point-two and a one percent escalator. So, the other two local institutions have gone with the twelve-point-two and one percent.
And when do we expect this will be brought back? Fairly soon. Next meeting. Either early September or the second meeting in September. All right. Any other questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we are on item seven point one is council concerns.
And we'll start with Michelle.
Big muddies coming up over Labor Day weekend. I have tickets for the wine tasting, the beer tasting, the best in area tasting. I have raffle tickets. It's going to be a Saturday, Sunday event this year, Saturday five to nine. That's when the wine tasting is. And then, Sunday traditionally, the noon to nine, come on down. We have bands both nights. I understand Layton did a battle for the best band or best battle, I don't know. They did a local band battle and they'll be opening up on Sunday. We'll have the Case VS back. We have more food trucks, more bathrooms, and we are making the levee work even under construction. So, keep that on your calendar. Tickets, I have them.
Where else can you get them?
That's, you can get them at The Chamber, the Midtown Foods, Hy-Vee and Layton Broadcasting.
Al?
Just a reminder and actually a thank you to the members of the Winona Municipal Band. Their season ended and although there was more rain perhaps than usual, they did an outstanding job in providing that entertainment at our historic Lake Park Band Shell and our nineteen-fifteen era Winona Municipal Band. So, it's so much appreciated, their hard work and the director and members of the band and the work they've done. I did have a constituent mention to me the railroad crossing on Olmsted Street. This is between Third and Second or Second and Third, between malt Europe and going east of that. It seems to be in pretty sad shape. And I don't know if that's a issue with the railroad that may own the track or if it's a privately owned spur for that particular business that's there. But it certainly is onerous because there's a lot of truck traffic that goes over there as well as passenger vehicles. So, appreciate information on how to improve that going forward. So, and understand that the folks at the Bezon Stone Quarry will be blasting tomorrow. So, keep that in mind if you're in the Knott Valley area or anything like that, that you may hear some noise and it's not necessarily related to the solar eclipse. Thank you.
Speaking of railroad crossings, I know we've talked about the Sioux Street Crossing. And is there any movement on that?
They were going to come back and smooth that out.
Okay. That'll be good.
Thank you, Keith.
Pam?
Well, I had the pleasure of being a tour guide for the American Queen passengers a week ago. And it's always enjoy, it's always enjoyable for me to hear people's responses to Winona when they, when they take the tour. You know, obviously, the Marine Art Museum just knocks everybody's socks off. They just get back on that bus kind of stunned, like, where have I been? So, it's really, it's really fun. I, I wonder if we could persuade the American Queen to stop on a day when more of our, our banks and attractions are open? Or is there some way that we can persuade the banks and the other attractions to be open when the American Queen? That was truly disappointing. And I will, I'll try to look into this to see what the, you know, what could possibly be done. I know that the Queen has its own ideas about when, when she will stop. So, we just, I think we need to do better with that because three of the, three of the attractions were supposed to be open and were not.
Well, one had a wedding.
Well, anyway, that's my, that's my concern. I'll work on that.
I'll help you.
Okay.
Paul?
So, a couple of things are on my mind, thinking about the Fabian family and the unfortunate incident that happened with a young member of their family on a bicycle almost two weeks ago now, over in our neck of the woods. And so, college is back. WSU is back. SMU is coming back. High school's about to start. Our, our school districts are about to get going. We have a lot of construction going on in town. Drivers, please, you know, be very attentive. We have, we have probably eight to ten thousand more people out there on our streets. And we really need you to cooperate and work with us to, to keep everybody safe. So, keep your speeds down while we're going around some of our construction areas. Just be safe, be aware. That's all.
Thank you. George?
Okay. Welcome back to all the college students. I was walking around Third Street Saturday night and it is quite active again. So, they are reviving, revitalizing downtown. A lot of activity, a lot of good young people. I'll welcome them all back. And also, as the students are back, I would like to say good luck to my granddaughter, April, who we will begin to transport her to Pennsylvania for school tomorrow. So, good luck to her and all the students that are enrolled in schools this year. And also, just condolences to the family of Irene Mollick, Irene who passed away, very much a community volunteer. And her and her husband, Al, they're involved in a lot of things. And unfortunate loss too early, but condolences to them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are two items, approval of the minutes from August seventh and a claim against the city by Ellen Anrady.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, I move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Adjourn.